I want to welcome everybody to council tonight. Before we start, I would like to give a big thanks to both the Herald and Leamington Legion for the beautiful service they put on. And for us, we can never ever forget the sacrifices. Second of all, the Goodfellows Paper Drive. Want to thank all the volunteers and especially our fire department. They're out there every day, so we want to give them a thanks too on behalf of council. So, thank you. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Is there any conflict of interest amongst council members tonight? Seeing none, I need the adoption of the published agenda, please. And we have an addition?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Councilor Bondi has advised that she has a notice of motion concerning Remembrance Day that she will speak to in item 15, and so looking to add that to the published agenda this evening.
Thank you, Rob. All in favor of the published agenda? Okay. Thank you.
Sorry. Through you, Mr. Mayor. We need a mover and seconder on that. I did not...
Yeah, sorry about that. A mover, Councilor Darren and Councilor Bowman, all in favor? Scarry.
Item 5.1 on the agenda, adoption of minutes. That the minutes of the regular council meeting held November 4th, 2019 be adopted as circulated?
A mover, please. Councilor Van Endall and Deputy Mayor Malach. Any questions? All? Question?
Item 6 on the agenda tonight under public presentations is a presentation from, sorry, presentation from Naharika Bandaru, the Town of Essex Climate Change Analysis. Here on, to discuss the presentation entitled "Climate Impacts and Adaptation Strategies", our Director of Development Services, Laurie Chadwick, will speak to that matter first.
Go ahead, Laurie.
Thank you and good evening. Thank you, Mr. Your worship. This evening, we're here to not only introduce you to Naharika, but also to hear about what her plans are here at the Town of Essex. Naharika has joined us since August of 2019 under a grant received from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities to fund the development of a climate adaptation, excuse me, climate change action strategy or a climate change action plan. Naharika is here under contract until February of 2021. She has a Bachelor's of Applied Sciences in Environmental Engineering from the University of Windsor. She also has a Master's of Science in Environmental Science and Policy from John Hopkins University, which is currently underway. Naharika, in her time that she's been here with us, has impressed us quite a bit in her knowledge of the topic. She's shed a lot of light. She's given us some food for thought, and I hope tonight that you'll be able to gain some further insight, ask questions. Please feel free to have that dialogue here tonight. We are here to hear about what Naharika will be doing for the next year and several months. And at the end of Naharika's presentation, you'll also hear a motion. So what that motion will be essentially is for you to kickstart that climate adaptation plan and for it to allow us to move forward with implementing a strategy and implementing those actions that we can do here in the Town of Essex. So without further ado, may I introduce you to Naharika Bandaru?
Thank you, Laurie. And anytime you want to start, but I just say to council, I think this is your first presentation, so please don't be nervous. You probably are a little bit, but we're all patient with you, so...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Laurie, for that wonderful introduction. I'd like to start off with thanking everybody for being here tonight to discuss an important issue that will be a major priority to our town and its people in the coming months and years. I'm Naharika Bandaru, and I'll be talking about climate impacts and the need for adaptation measures for our local community. Laurie gave an introduction on me already. I did graduate from the University of Windsor with a Bachelor's in Environmental Engineering, and currently I'm in school for Masters in Environmental Science and Policy. I've been a contract employee since August of this year, following a grant secured by council from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities to fund the development of a climate change action plan. Now, the grant has stated deliverables associated with it that include devising an action strategy, a timeline for the development, and ultimate adoption by council. Additionally, our new strategic plan for the town also prioritizes sustainable development and climate change mitigation as one of its priorities. So just to give you a brief overview of our agenda, I'll start off with a summary on the state of the science on why we're experiencing these changes, what the data says exclusively for our community, how we've been impacted and can expect to be impacted in the important sectors of infrastructure, health, agriculture, as well as day-to-day recreation-wise. We'll discuss what momentum there is from the public on this issue, and then move on to why we need to focus on adaptation, what the strategy is for the development of an action plan, and then we'll end with any questions you may have. So it's important to start here, our discussion about the state of the science, why is it that we're seeing all of these changes? Now, this is an image that was taken from the International Space Station. It's the atmosphere. And as you can see, it's not a vast limitless expanse, but a very thin layer shell surrounding the planet, quite equivalent to the skin around an apple. This is the layer that comes into question when discussing all life on Earth because the air we breathe and the warmth we need for life to sustain is made possible by what the atmosphere is composed of. We receive solar radiation from the sun, which consists of UV rays, visible light waves, and infrared energy. That layer of atmosphere in its normal state, as it used to be, provided an important service and still does in keeping temperatures stable on the Earth. Most of the incoming radiation is absorbed by the atmosphere and the Earth's surface, which helps keep the planet warm. And the rest of that heat energy is re-radiated back to space in the form of infrared radiation. Now, remember that infrared radiation is what is responsible for heat. And some of that is trapped by the greenhouse gases in the atmosphere, which is a good thing because it makes the Earth the Goldilocks planet, not too hot like Venus, not too cold like Mars, just right for Baby Bear and for us. But that layer is changing radically because man-made global warming pollution is making it thicker and disrupting the energy balance of the Earth. Higher concentrations of greenhouse gases help trap heat, and the result is global warming, which then leads to climate change. Now, what are the greenhouse gases? Carbon dioxide, methane, nitrous oxide, ozone, fluorinated gases, and water vapor are the main ones. How they make up the atmosphere compositionally varies from gas to gas, and so does their potency. Four of these gases occur naturally and are created from industrial processes. Fluorinated gases are exclusively artificial, and water vapor is natural, but water vapor has the capacity to absorb heat, and the warmer the Earth's average temperature increases, the more water vapor we have and the more heat is retained. Sorry. So going over to discussing some of the sources of greenhouse gases. The sources are multiple. Mining, agriculture, particularly animal agriculture is a big part because of methane from livestock and rice fields. The fossil fuel extraction and decay of organic waste in landfill sites also produces carbon dioxide and methane. The thawing permafrost is a concern, and the management of forests is also another major source. The biggest source by far is the burning of fossil fuels, however. Gas, oil, coal, by which carbon dioxide is released, and that's important to know because carbon dioxide is so far the main culprit. Now, let's take a look at this chart showing the amount of carbon dioxide in the atmosphere in blue, the associated temperature in white with respect to time and years before present. On the carbon dioxide side, it oscillated between 180 and 280 parts per million for all that time. Now, bearing, and here's where we are now, 415 parts per million. Now, bearing in mind correlation between carbon dioxide concentrations and temperature, we know this from scientists having studied data from multiple sources over years of scientific research. From ice cores drawn from Greenland, Antarctica, and tropical mountain glaciers, all show that the Earth's climate has responded to changes in greenhouse gas levels in the past. Ancient evidence has also been found in tree rings, ocean sediments, coral reefs, and layers of sedimentary rocks. This ancient or paleo-climate evidence reveals that current warming is occurring roughly 10 times faster than the average rate of Ice Age recovery warming. So all of this data collected by climate scientists and organizations around the world tell us that Earth is warmer today than it has been in the last 10 millennia. That's since the humans walked over the Bering land bridge between Russia and North America to populate the Western Hemisphere. And direct links have been studied and found excessive greenhouse gas pollution as the cause of the rate of warming. When talking about Canada's greenhouse gas emissions, the chart here on the right shows that most of our emissions come from energy that is spent as fuel for electricity and heat and in transportation. A lot of energy also goes into growing food. We can see that as one of the sources of greenhouse gases in Essex here. We don't do a lot of extraction here in Essex, but our main sources are aligned with the national primary sources. And while we look at this and often wonder, so what, China's still the largest emitter by leaps and bounds? We shift the perspective on how much Canada emits per capita, and the whole story changes. We're anywhere between the first and third largest per capita emitters. And if you have to get more specific, according to the World Resources Institute, Canada is the third highest greenhouse gas emitter per million dollars of gross domestic product, and one of only three countries above the world average. So the onus of responsibility does fall on individuals and regional entities to curb emissions and pollutions, also adapt and also adapt to the impacts consequentially. Now, to further discuss the impacts of higher greenhouse gases, we've all heard that it's getting hotter, but what does that really look like? This is a bell curve. It shows the distribution of summer temperatures and what has been labeled the normal temperature span in the middle of the 20th century. The blue represents cooler-than-average days in 1951, the white are normal days, and the red are warmer-than-normal days. So here's where we are now. In the 80s, the bell curve shifted right, and warmer-than-normal days are much more. You see a new category on the extreme right, which is dark red, which signifies extremely hot days, and you also notice that the lighter blue area has shrunk in. In the 90s, the curve shifted even further. And in the last 10 years, it shifted even more. So now, the extremely hot days are more numerous than the cooler-than-average days. Extremely hot days are almost 150 times more common than they were just 30 years ago. We still have cold days. Weather is still variable, but the preponderance of temperatures is much warmer, and extremely hot days are the ones that are driving a lot of the change. Now, under a high-carbon business-as-usual scenario, we're looking at increasing annual mean temperatures for Canada. Down in southwestern Ontario, we're looking at temperatures anywhere from 10 degrees to a lot more. But for the 2051-2080 projections for mean temperature, while mean temperatures remain in the higher end of the temperature bar for southwestern Ontario, we see more areas, almost all of southern Canada and Newfoundland encompassed in the higher annual average zones. Weather is not isolated, so drastic changes in other regions across Canada are sure to affect us, and already are, as you can all see from the year we've had and the previous few years. Specifically for the Town of Essex, we were able to obtain mean annual temperature projections. We start at a baseline of 9.6 degrees Celsius under a high-carbon business-as-usual scenario where we're not able to obtain significant reductions to greenhouse gas emissions, which leads us to higher annual means with passing years. And while a couple degrees increase in temperature may not seem very threatening, the consequences of overall increase translate very differently to each season and the weather systems that are governed by it. Wintertime warming can lead to later onset of the season, less on the snow, on the ground, on average, earlier thaw, but more extreme events like polar vortices or a more drastic El Nino effect, which would still debilitate people. There will be more wintertime precipitation in the form of rain, not snow, as we progress further into the 21st century. We would be looking at earlier spring with higher levels of precipitation and storm events, as well as earlier melts in rivers and streams. Higher precipitation is not great at this time, as we saw this year with most of our farmers not being able to put seed into the ground until much later in the season. Higher summer averages would extend summers in general, and we'd be more prone to heat waves and unusual warmer extremes that most of our citizens haven't experienced in their lifetimes and would find hard to get acclimatized to. And with warmer fall temperatures, we can again look at variable precipitation events, a shorter fall season as it starts to look more like historical summer with delayed onset of frost on the ground. So for example, a couple degrees increase in annual means means hotter summers and more days above 30 degrees in your yearly season. This knowledge is important because this leads us to asking questions like, how will this impact the Town of Essex? Do we need to plan for more cooling measures in the forms of infrastructure and making emergency services more available for vulnerable populations? How many heat waves do we need to prepare for? Are people going to be taking more time off of work as a result? So what it all essentially translates to is that we're looking at a theme of warmer, wetter, and wilder here in Essex. We're looking at higher variability in seasonal events. Using data from multiple credible sources like Environment and Climate Change Canada, university scientific research, and projections generated by consultants for this region, we're able to look at and expect changes like more precipitation in winter and spring, more extreme winds and shoreline flooding. And well, what we're looking at is more extremes and more variability in weather patterns. So it's going to get wetter because it is going to get warmer. With every one degree of temperature rise, there is a 7% increase in the water-holding capacity in the atmosphere. With more water vapor in the air, there is more water available to precipitate in extreme single-event downpours. And being next to the Great Lakes, which we're extremely fortunate in having such a beautiful vast resource of fresh water, we're also set up for more extreme precipitation, which we already have been seeing, and so it gets wilder. In terms of precipitation, we're looking at more rain and snow in a short amount of time, and a higher return period for storm events. Precipitation is dictated mainly by three main factors: intensity, duration, and frequency. IDF. Now, remember that as we move on to the next slide, because IDF is used to generate what are called IDF curves. Now, IDF curves are generated specifically for southern Ontario, which gives us an idea of future storm intensity, duration, and frequency, or how often they will return. The storms we saw in 2016 and 2017 were one-in-100-year floods, which means a storm of that intensity historically had a one-in-100 chance of becoming what it did. We're going to see a 40% increase in those and a 25% increase in what were 10-year storms, making them the new norm. Meteorological Services is currently recategorizing some of those 100-year floods as the new 20-year flooding events. So I want to talk about what all of those projections mean for us at the Town of Essex. I'm not here to talk about the melting polar ice caps or endangered populations of, you know, tropical rainforests. I want to talk about how this is going to affect our families and our communities and our daily lives in the Town of Essex. So let's start with infrastructure. This is a picture from 1920 of a road being built in our Town of Essex, possibly what's now Highway 3. It was a more tedious process back then, but we can see how important infrastructure is as we continue to need and use them 100 years ago till today and into the future. This is Cottery Park Road in nearby Leamington. Portions of this road were fully lost last year. The lake had washed away the road surface at one location, and at another location, the shoulders of the road were lost. Some of these roads were unusable, and lots of roadblocks were in place. So with more inclement weather, we can expect more damage to properties and facilities and loss of revenue associated with that. More replacement would be needed, and more resources would be required each time these extreme events happen, and there would be more stress in procuring these resources as well. Associated working conditions may be more difficult, too. Since 2016, we're seeing a rise in the number of basement floodings, not just in Essex, but all over the county and Windsor as well. Basement flooding is the biggest climate change-related cost Canadians are dealing with. According to the Insurance Bureau of Canada, the average cost to fix basement flooding in Ontario is $40,000. The more frequent these occurrences, the more flooding insurance is reduced, and people are on the hook to pay future damages. This causes significant financial stress. And to top it all off, people take approximately seven days off of work to deal with flooding. So how do we deal with these severe weather consequences? The Insurance Bureau of Canada also reported the insured losses from the 2016 and 2017 storms totaled $232 million. The Town of Essex spent $5 million over three years updating their sewer infrastructure. Now, that was the cost of adaptation, preventing losses to town and private property over hundreds of millions of dollars, as we now know as ground truth. With more intense rainfall and storm events, we also end up looking at damage in unexpected places like this deck on a private property in Colchester that was found at the bottom of a bluff. So while the bluff protects from higher water levels and wave action on the one side, nothing is protecting the bluff from oversaturated soil. So we're looking at increased cost to build and repair to private property, which is more often much more expensive than having prepared measures in place. This is in nearby Wheatley, and you can see the severe bluff damage, which is a big public hazard. This one is just from last month. A recent CBC report highlighted the extensive damage to shoreline from erosion at Hillman Marsh and Point Peely as well. At Colchester, high water levels and wave action have resulted in beach closures, not just due to the danger posed from them, but also because of the damage. The break wall along our shoreline properties here weren't as extensively breached or damaged like the rest of the county shoreline, but maybe we can't expect that to remain so in the future. This is another instance of high lake levels. This is from last year during springtime. We talked about higher spring melt flows and greater precipitation. We're still fortunate enough to have floating docks that still permitted the use of the marina on some of these days, but the rest of the county had many marina closure days that year. Can we say that indefinitely about our harbor as well? So we got data from Windsor about what excess heat can do, so we're moving on from rain events to heat. This chart compares daily maximum temperature to the mortality rate in Windsor. So they took out all the cases where people had died in car crashes from disease or other medical issues and from accidents and such, and compared what was left to the temperature that day, and what they saw was an increase in the number of deaths on the days with hotter temperatures. So we need to start looking at cooling measures and what populations would need, what populations would need these services the most. It's important to think about the most vulnerable: agricultural workers and other workers that work outdoors, infants and children, those with pre-existing medical conditions, and those suffering from mental illnesses. All of these groups are especially vulnerable. Outdoor activities are threatened or limited. This means there will be a greater need for cooling measures and infrastructure. Parson Recreation at the Town of Essex is already reporting that this year they had more requests for dugouts and shade covers at outdoor facilities than ever. Now, public infrastructure damage in our area is exclusive to rain events. This is damage on Highway 3 from summertime last year. We can expect roads to buckle, causing more accidents or downtimes for maintenance, especially if they haven't been built for higher temperatures and heat waves. And speaking of more climatic extremes, we have also been experiencing more severe winters. This is the jet stream that determines wintertime temperatures in the Arctic. What we're looking at is a normal jet stream, but with climate change, the jet stream has started to get wavier, affecting lower parts of North America. The weather in the winter starts becoming more unpredictable. Move a year forward, and the jet stream split into three parts, causing another instance of what we're calling the polar vortex. And we observed the direct effects of that. In 2019, two record cold nights caused significant damage to grape buds in Essex County. The disastrous 2014, when there were multiple periods of extremely low temperatures and the damage built up over the winter, cost the local wine industry millions of dollars and killed up to 95% of grape buds that year. Some vineyards didn't have grapes that summer and focused on rebuilding the vines that year. So this brings us to health. How will these climate impacts affect the health of our residents and workers? The Windsor Essex County Health Unit says that we are to see a higher number of diseases from carrying vectors in our area due to a more favorable environment for them to thrive longer. Vector-borne diseases, heat stress, air pollution, and war-borne diseases are all influenced by a changing climate. In fact, 80s albancus and 80s egyptai, which are two species of mosquito, were not supposed to be detected in Windsor, Essex until 2025, but the county health unit already has reported cases. Ticks are also a major threat. Last year, the back-legged tick, which is what causes Lyme disease, was endemic only to the Point Peely region. This year, the risk areas were expanded to almost all of Essex County. Because the temperatures are getting warmer and staying warmer, it allows them to get into new areas and stay there and flourish. Once ticks are established in an area, it's very hard to get rid of them. Air quality is also worsened by hotter temperatures, which produce more favorable conditions for existing health issues to persist. Just think about the fact that in 2000, the grains of pollen per cubic meter were about 8,500. Now, a lot of people suffer from allergies in spring and summer. Look what's expected in 20 years: two and a half times as much. And it also affects children particularly. There was a recent finding that air pollution during pregnancy has been linked to high blood pressure in children after they're born. So these are some of the health effects that we can already see and expect more of in the region, and the knowledge can be used to prepare us for better regional preventative measures and aftercare. Next, we want to discuss effects of climate change on the agriculture sector, which of course is the main source of livelihood for many in the town. In fact, agriculture accounts for approximately 80% of our local economy. Essex County has about 1,700 total farms, which is approximately 3% of Ontario's 2006 total. How will our local crops fare in an era of rising temperatures? Wheat, corn, soy, all of these are expected or projected to decline significantly with each degree of temperature increase. We grow most of the, we grow all three of these crops here, and they make up a significant portion of the human caloric intake on a daily basis. We saw on an earlier slide that we're at 9.6 degrees mean temperature average right now, and projected to increase to 12.8 degrees by 2050, which means for that approximate three-degree rise in temperature, we're looking at a corresponding yield decline in corn of over 22% in 30 years. We hear that carbon is good for crops and growth, but too much of a good thing can be fatal. Higher carbon dioxide levels means these crops demand more of other nutrients and demand more water as well. They're all proportional. So then we need to start asking the question, how do we amend our plating practices? What other crops can we grow here that would be hardier or better suited to the new temperature conditions? We saw there was going to be about 165% increase in heat waves in our region by 2050. Windsor, Essex, the county health unit defines a heat wave as three days of continuous warming over 30, three days of continuous over 30-degree days, and that will adversely affect crop production in our town. When talking about impacts from greater precipitation events, our town's farmers, the county farmers, have lost millions of... the county farmers, have lost millions of dollars this year in the worst planting season in memory. Soybean harvest was pushed to October and November, and right now, we can still see a lot of other unharvested crop under a pile of snow. All the farmers' forward contracting lose a lot of money as a result. Insurance planting deadlines were extended, but farmers still had to rush to keep up with it. There will be increases in pests and plant diseases with higher carbon dioxide levels. A majority of our local economy, national and global economy, depends on the food that we produce in the region. So while we're looking at longer growing seasons with later frost days, we still have to remember that warmer temperatures favor other organisms that thrive on them as well. We don't have a lot of cattle in the region, but tick-borne diseases for cattle are also increasing, and that means there's more transferable vectors to humans in the area as well. So all things considered, how are these impacts going to affect people on a more day-to-day personal level? How is this going to affect what brings us together as a community and as family in a place like Essex where we like to belong? How will this impact things in our lives that have always been there? Now, the city of Windsor had trouble last year keeping ice frozen in their hockey rinks. Now, we're not talking about days where we were suffering from the polar vortex and extreme cold snaps because nobody could go outside. We're talking about other days during the wintertime where temperatures were higher than average, and people couldn't go out and participate in their favorite sports. We're also talking about other impacts to recreation and tourism, people like taking their boat out in the summer, people like... we discussed the impacts on the local wineries. So are we looking at a disappearing way of life? And what else matters to us in Windsor, Essex that we need to protect? Spending time outdoors hiking and birdwatching is one of the favorite pastimes the people have here. This was Holiday Beach in July this year, completely flooded and shut down for days. Noxious weeds are also said to become a bigger nuisance with rising temperatures. People like spending their summers outdoors, but more aggressive weeds can be a cause for concern, for example, more poison ivy. The Great Lakes, of course, are a vast favorite resource. Lake Erie is particularly affected because the microcystis algae that causes the harmful algal blooms every summer are getting bigger and more toxic. Now, that not only poses problems to water treatment and intake infrastructure, but also impact activities like swimming and other water-based activities. The harmful algal bloom forecast conducted by NOAA and its partners has shown that habs in nine of the past 12 years were deemed severe based on its severity index. The town of Toledo, Ohio faced a water emergency in 2014, and they were unable to drink their water or cook with it or brush their teeth. People are also reporting lower tourism and recreation, income from tourism and recreation in the area because of these algal blooms. Now, people like fishing in Cedar Creek and Lake Erie, the fish will move somewhere else because there's less oxygen in the water, because harmful algal blooms aren't just unsightly, they deplete oxygen in the water, causing dead zones that can't support life. The fishing and charter boat industry is hit particularly hard every year, along with tourism and recreation. We're also looking at habitat loss and degradation of the environment affecting land-based species. 50% of all land-based species are at risk in this century. In the Essex region, more than 240 federally or provincially rare species exist. Since the agricultural revolution in the 1800s, the area has already lost a lot of its wetlands, and climate change is said to further exacerbate this. So Canadians recognize this issue. We've seen a recent surge in protests for climate action spanning adults to kids in school, all demanding their governments to recognize their priorities. In fact, 80% Canadians today believe climate change is happening and that it's human-caused. While climate issues have always seemed like a distant issue happening to people far away, every day we don't do something, we're getting closer to the eye of the storm, and people are seeing that. Public momentum and visible impacts have led the House of Commons to declare a national climate emergency earlier this year, which includes 470 Canadian governmental agencies, including the province of Quebec and our neighbor's Chatham Kent County. The city of Windsor is voting tonight, actually, as we speak, on a recommendation for a climate emergency. The county council will be deciding on a county-wide climate emergency on Wednesday, which may include delegation down to lower-tier municipalities like us, requiring us to present action items for mitigation or adaptation measures. Which leads us to tangible action. What can we do to make our communities more resilient to impact? How can we empower ourselves to act in the best interests of our town to minimize the cost of damage and optimize any economic opportunities? There are two ways to deal with climate impacts. The first is mitigation, which is akin to disease prevention or greenhouse gas emissions reduction in this case, like switching to better practices from non-renewable to renewable power generation. The second is adaptation, which is recognizing that we're already facing impacts of global warming and assess the situation to treat the symptoms. For the action strategy I will be recommending today to council, the primary focus will be adaptation, and here's why. Adaptation done right will lead to better growth and development. It will also protect nature, reduce inequalities, and create opportunities. The return of investment is in the range of $6 to $11 for every $1 invested in adaptation, and this is by an agency called Climate Resilience. Now, this is from prevention of property loss and disruption of day-to-day life, as well as reducing costs from using resources before the actual impact. So earlier this year, the town was able to secure a grant from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities to develop and implement a climate adaptation plan. This is the grant under which I'm employed as a contract employee for the town. In the past, the town has invested time and efforts into identifying sustainability actions and regional impacts. We also invested considerable time into energy management plans, and we participated in regional collaborations with IRCA and the Ontario Climate Consortium. In 2012, a draft adaptation action plan for the town of Essex was created in partnership with the International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives. This document highlights the state of impacts and projections into the future, along with recommendations. And to throw some light onto more recent efforts, it would be unfair not to mention the latest strategic plan and sustainable infrastructure development being the main priority for the next few years for the town. Mitigating climate impacts and reducing environmental footprint was specifically highlighted in this publication as a current and future need for our citizens. And the town of Essex continues to heavily invest in our stormwater management systems. This includes creating advanced models in our urban centers to allow for future planning and improvements. And the story is unfinished without mentioning the famous Seawatts program, which is a 20-year program to construct about 800 kilometers of active transportation across Essex County. Seven municipalities and county are working in partnership, and they're all working to promote healthy, active, and cleaner lifestyles. So why is there a need for continued action planning when impacts and general risk have already been identified? The thing is, community and regional resilience needs a strategy and time invested into research and organization of resources that can be most effectively and economically used to come up with reliable programs and action items. So it starts with building a team of stakeholders and subject matter experts and consultants, conducting research, estimating future scenarios, estimating vulnerability and risks, and prioritizing what our high and medium-level risks are, finally coming down to developing a plan and then moving on to implementing it and monitoring our progress through it. Preparing for climate change is a matter of risk management and good governance, which involves a fair amount of insight into people's needs before they anticipate it. So when the time comes, our healthy policies and programs will help the town endure in the face of these climatic challenges. We start with intuitively asking the climate question when it comes to any planning and development activity. We monitor climate change, evaluate the effectiveness of our strategies, and adjust as needed. We use the best available science, and we routinely review the town's vulnerability to climate change and keep up to date with the evolving science. And most importantly, we have to engage, educate, and communicate with our citizens and stakeholder groups about our priorities. So developing an action plan would involve looking into all relevant sectors here at the town, and you don't have to read all of this, but essentially, we're looking at creating and amending regulations, plans, standards, and codes, making operational changes wherever necessary, investing in vital capital projects like we did with our stormwater infrastructure, but most importantly, focusing on education and awareness, because no conversation can be had without being armed with the right information and guidance system in place. We try instead to create a unified system of incentives that carries in the right direction and that draws many different solutions. So my proposed plan of action for which I seek approval today is to implement resilient adaptation measures, which involves various phases. The expected timeline for this extends from today to January 2021. Please note that what I'll be showing in the next few slides is a high-level overview. So Phase 1 would be assessing climate impacts. I'm here today showing you the action plan or action strategy, and after council approval, we would be involved in creating adaptation teams and steering committees by engaging stakeholders and concerned parties. And then we move on to performing vulnerability and risk assessments. Phase 2 would be the adaptation planning itself, where we take all the information gathered from our vulnerability and risk assessment, and we start prioritizing those risks. We take that information, establish a vision for us: what are the goals we will be working towards? And then we start assigning tools, which means, for example, if we have a tree plantation program, then what are the resources required? Do we need to amend any laws? Do we need to make any operational changes? And then we package that into programs. We develop a reporting system for all these programs, so we're able to measure progress and we're able to see what kind of updates are required on a need-by-need basis. Then we conduct a gap analysis and prioritization workshop, which would involve looking at any overlays, any redundancies, eliminating redundancies, and making sure we've covered all the gaps. And finally, we amend the current draft adaptation plan using all of this information. Phase 3 would be seeking council approval on the new adaptation plan, following which we would be informing stakeholders to prepare for deployment and do any further program development, which would be mostly financial-based, seeking funding, obtaining grants, et cetera. And by January of 2021, we should be at Phase 4, which would be council adopting the final adaptation plan, implementing it, and then receiving continuous updates through the reporting system. So anticipatory adaptation planning has benefits and challenges. Planning can increase future benefits and reduce future risks associated with climate change. Being proactive in planning for climate change can create opportunities for modifying present policies that can decrease vulnerability while also creating opportunities for capitalizing on some of the benefits. We're also looking at lower long-term costs. The challenges include working around the degree of uncertainty around when and how these impacts will land and the specifics of severity for any one event. Other challenges might be that since the benefits of advanced planning sometimes only appear on impact, political experience takes precedence. And finally, it's important to realize that it might be challenging to do right by the duty of care we owe to our citizens. Negligence has resulted in reported cases of citizens suing their local governments over inaction recently. So while adaptation means adjusting our decisions, behaviors, and activities to account for existing or expected changes in climate, we can also use it to empower our community and our citizens and make sure we're building on our resilience. Having said all of that, I would like to end with this picture of two active enterprising children from British Columbia who were recently recognized as honorary citizens for their role in influencing 12 municipal governments to adopt climate solutions and regional action planning. Franny Yakhilashak very wisely states that to make real, long-lasting change, everyone needs to act. All three levels of Canadian government need to act, too. So with that, I'd like to put forward the recommendation that council, direct administration to implement the climate change action strategy in accordance with the Municipalities for Climate Innovation Program of the Federation of Canadian Municipalities as set out in this presentation. And with that, I'd like to conclude and take any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Very, very well put together. Very well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Questions from council? Any questions from council at all tonight? Councillor Verbeek.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That was not your first presentation. It couldn't have been. It was wonderful. I, for one, was really grateful. I went through it over and over, and I'm really glad we have it in hand now. And I'm grateful that you did it, and I look forward to, you know, your follow-up plans with your adoption planning to come to us. It's timely because we're working on a lot of things, you know, our streetscape plan and, you know, and other things. And I, for one, right away when I looked at those, was concerned about, you know, enough active transportation options and things like that. And after looking at this report, I see again, it drives home for me that moving forward now, especially now that we have this in hand and what you're going to follow up with us as a council, we can't and shouldn't make any more decisions moving forward that don't look through the lens of what you've brought to us here. And again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor. Deputy Mayor Malasch.
Through you, your worship to our specialist and what we've had here for the town of Essex. Thank you for this evening's presentation. I just had a quick question on the... There was one map that you had here, and I can't quite see what the title is here. It's page 28 of the agenda, but the CO2 emissions per capita. The slide before that said that 45% of our CO2 usage was based on burning fuel for electric and heat. Well, we are in a colder climate than a lot of the world. For instance, China, or most of Canada is further north than China, particularly where their heavier populations are. Do they account for that when they talk about CO2 emissions that we're in a more vulnerable area? We have to use heating to warm our homes. So is there a factor that's built into this so that we're not penalized for being in a colder area and we have to try and reduce more than what we possibly can because of the fact of our geography?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to address that, yes, we do have a higher demand for heating, but that means we can reinforce our current facilities and infrastructure to make sure that there aren't any heating losses. So while the need is recognized, we can do things to prevent losses. And I'd also like to pass on to Jeff Watson for further comment.
Through you, Ms. Mayor. The... I think a standard of comparison would be a European country, and I can think of Sweden, for example. Sweden is basically committed to making all existing buildings what they call net zero. In other words, the amount of energy they use is equal to the amount of energy they produce. In other words, you know, like solar panels and that sort of thing, things that will basically allow energy recovery. New buildings must be net minus, which means that they actually have to produce more energy than they use. And so this is a country where it's a very cold climate, they have a lot of the issues that we have, but they are actually forcing development to take that into account and to be much more conscious of their energy usage. The problem we have, of course, is that we have a lot of existing infrastructure just like them, which was designed in a much more energy-free world, where basically the use of energy was not really a big issue. And so we have to start catching up to those kinds of countries and start looking at those kinds of actions to try to mitigate our usage. kinds of actions to try to mitigate our usage. It's not just a question of greenhouse gas production, it's a question of energy usage. And, you know, we live on a finite planet, that energy isn't going to be there forever. And so we have to find ways to be more efficient at using our energy as well.
Thank you for the answer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and great presentation. And I want to start off by thanking our staff for applying for the grant for the position in the first place. I think that showed a lot of foresight, and it was totally a win-win for us. So some of my questions are, is how do council members get some items in this plan? Because now we've kind of stirred the beehive, and I'm sure in the next, like, I've been on council for nine years, so I have a whole list of ideas myself, but I'm sure we're going to get approached by residents in the next couple of weeks. So I'd like to see how we can bring items forward. For example, you know, I see adaptation, because I'm a mom and I'm active in our community, I go to the Harrow Park, and when I'm at the Harrow Park, it's a beautiful, lovely park, but in the summer, you can't go there in the daytime. So, you know, can we look at, you know, some parks have those fancy awnings. So that's one of the things that I think of when I think of this plan. You know, the idling, we brought up a couple terms ago, or last term, even two terms ago or whatever, an idling policy. Can we look at an idling policy for our vehicles, possibly a bylaw, more signage? I think we did do some social media on that, but we've kind of dropped the ball with that. Also, we brought up paper to trees. It was an IRCA initiative a few years ago where the corporation calculated how much paper we used and we planted that many trees. I've also had a resident approach me from Colchester saying, hey, does the town have property where people who want to donate trees to the town can plant trees? For example, if people in apartments want to do their share and plant one tree a year, they have no place. So can we do a program where we say, hey, if you want to sponsor a tree, not necessarily a bereavement tree, but if you want to just sponsor planting trees, does the town have property or can we partner with somebody who will be, can we be that conduit to plant trees for people? That's one of the things that came up. Can we look at electric vehicles in our fleet going forward? Is that something that we can vet out? Can we look at more incentives for infilling properties? So we have vacant little properties around, so we're using brown land, brown fields, and building, say, for example, semis compared to a single detached. Can we look at incentives for that? You know, we have a heritage grant, I believe we have $25,000 aside for a heritage grant. Can we look at doing an environmental grant where, you know, the farmer in Essex County does some big environmental initiative, and we give him a grant and we give an award and we make it an annual thing, whether it's $2,000? It might get some inspiration, some ideas out there. I went to a conference a couple of years ago, and they told us to put on those lenses. So like councillor Verbeek, you know, a health and all policies. So I really like that idea. We are doing some good things. The mapping of the sanitary and stormwater, so we need to, you know, keep talking about that, the Libro loan program with shorelines. I really like the idea of the National Climate Change Declaration or the Climate Change Emergency Declaration. So, you know, things to talk about. Should we have a policy where we're just doing gravel parking lots versus paved parking lots? What are the pros? What are the cons? What are the environmental impacts? Public transit, the bus from Leamington to Windsor is working really well. Can we make sure that that's sustainable? You know, there was a whole bunch of media in the beginning, and I think it's working, but we've kind of dropped the ball on promoting it. I think we need to do more promotion like that. So I'm really interested in having like a brainstorming session with council. I do believe it's good governance and healthy policies. So I'm excited to move forward, and I have a lot of ideas, and I hope that this isn't the only chance our council gets to talk about it when it's in the brainstorming session, because I have a lot more, but I'm keeping it short.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Van Endel.
Well, I think I'm going to be the skunk at the garden party. That was a very, very pretty presentation, quite apocalyptic. It was everything in there except zombies eating us. If it was, if this was just about planting trees and buying Chevy Volts, I'd be all for this, but what we're being asked to do here tonight goes far, far deeper than just paying lip service to some environmental gift wrapping. You know, two weeks ago, as a member of IRCA, I was asked to vote for declaring a climate emergency, and I voted against it. I was one of three people on IRCA who voted against that, and it's for the same reason I'll be voting against this tonight, to give voice to what I think is actually a real majority of what our citizens and taxpayers want and believe. The goals here are really vague, but it would seem that they're going to pose a huge challenge to anyone who uses energy. There was that 45% chart. By the way, the chart is wrong. That's an all-Canada chart. Ontario gets about 60% of its energy from nuclear power, so that chart doesn't even apply to Essex County. That's just one of many, many factual errors that were in that presentation. But if we go along with this, we're going to be posing huge challenges to our automotive, farming, and tourism industries, all of which use large amounts of energy, not to mention home heating, transportation, commuting to jobs, commuting to the hospital. This is going to leave no aspect of our economy or our town unchanged. If you saw what the last part of that plan was, everything the town does has to go through this little gate. Okay, how does this affect the economy? How does this affect the climate? That means that there'll be huge draconian and damaging decisions made that are going to hurt our economy and our people, and I'm not going to vote for that. And the other reason is, there are so many reasons, I could talk about this for hours, but even if this report was true, the challenges are not our job. It's out of our jurisdiction. We do not have the authority, we don't have the fending to change the climate or the weather, even if we could, which is obviously impossible. It's been proven many times. The science is far from settled. It's all presented here tonight as though nobody disagrees, and we all know that's nonsense. This week is the 10th anniversary of Climate Gate, when tens of thousands of emails between all the scientists who've rigged up the climate change industry were talking to each other about how we have to hide this and how we rig this and how we change that. It just disappeared from the media, but anyone can Google it, anyone at home, look up Climate Gate, and you can find out how much of this stuff is real and how much of it is actually just massaged figures, very, very wonky models, none of which have come true in the last 50 years. That's another thing. Ask anyone over 50, you know, they say the science is settled, but we've seen this since the time we were kids. I mean, we've been hearing these predictions since 1968. Remember acid rain, overpopulation, mass starvation, the new ice age, the Great Lakes drawing up, remember that one? All the fish disappearing, the deer going away, the crops dying, heat, rising oceans, the Arctic gone, glaciers gone. There have been 100 major predictions made since 1968, not one, single one of them has come true. And now we're hearing this, how we're supposed to be afraid of heat after the coldest month on record, shattering records that go back from the beginning of our civilization on this continent. This is irresponsible, it's premature. Almost all those charts warn about what's going to happen in 2040, based on evidence from people who've already been wrong for 50 years straight. So I'm going to vote against this.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Bjorkman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for your presentation, and I'm going to have to ask you to say your name for me again, because I want to say thank you, but I don't want to guess here.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It's Niharaka, and I often tell people it rhymes with America.
Niharaka. Well, thank you very much for your presentation. It was very well done. A couple, I mean, I enjoyed a lot of the presentation, but a lot of it was at the macro level, and I was hoping for a little more micro. I think one of the things that I did enjoy was just as we brought it down and in speaking to us, talking about looking at vulnerable populations, looking at our crops, you know, we need to go into more drought-resistant crops, the different things that we'll have to do, which, I mean, we have an agriculture center right here in Harrow. We have professionals around us that we can engage in our town, that can be part of looking at solutions for our area. I agree with councillor Van Endel, and we're not going to change the climate, we're not as a council, as the Town of Essex. There's a small thing we can do to take care of our area, and the specifics of what councillor Bondi was getting into, along with those things, you know, working with our farmers, making sure that we've got buffer areas that go into the ditch, so that we're taking those phosphates out of the soil. There's so many things we can do on a local level that will make a difference for our local people, and that's our responsibility, that's where we are. So I'm looking forward to seeing more of those kinds of things fleshed out. I will say that I think the timeline is fairly long. Looking at what you brought in those last four slides, we're not taking action until January of 2021. That is far too long. We need to take action today. So I'm hoping that part of this program is to establish actions that we start, not that we wait, and I know we got to consult and we've got to do all those things, but the time to get things done is upon us. And to do a full workup and a full plan and go two years before we get started in taking action, I think is too long. But I do agree that there is change, there are things we have to do, because our residents are paying for it, living on the lakes right now, our residents are paying for it with the storms, they're paying for it with day-to-day activities that are just changed. And I won't argue Mr. Van Endel's premise with various facts that are here, but none of us really know. We're doing our best to figure out where we are in this time and in this climate and in this era we're living in. So I think we're responsible to our residents to make sure we do the best we can to ensure that we're taking care of them. So thank you very much for it. I look forward to moving forward with this. Like I say, I hope we can move forward quickly and that we can start taking action as we all agree on actions that need to be taken. So thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. Deputy Mayor Malasch.
Thank you, through your worship. So Niharaka and Mr. Watson, I'm looking to try and figure out, so what's the next step in this? Are we going to have an opportunity as a council to make suggestions? Do you want us to send them to you by email? Or do we want to have, is that something that you were expecting us to do tonight? I know we had the presentation tonight, but I didn't know if that's what you were looking forward to. Just let me know, because I do have a list. Or do you just want us to mail them to you? Are we going to have another meeting about this? What do we tell residents that want to participate, as councillor Bondi was saying, like, how do we give them an avenue to put forward their ideas as well?
So following today, after council approval, we would be moving on to a phase where internally, first, we develop an internal adaptation team, and then it would also be followed by creation of a steering committee that would be in Phase Two, and that would include all different kinds of stakeholders and council members as well, and we will be accepting recommendations and suggestions from council members at that time.
Excellent. Thank you.
Councillor Bowman.
Just a quick comment. Earlier comment was made to move quicker on the process. I think it should move slowly, because obviously, it's a whole change in how we do our business, do our daily living, and the consequences as we change will affect everybody's way of life. So whether it comes down to the manufacturing of cars, what be it, the oil industry, and that has a huge impact on just the economy of the country. So any change that you start to make has to move very slowly, just so it can be counteracted as it moves forward. So moving too quickly would be disastrous, both financially and support-wise. So I would think it should move fairly slowly, and I know some projections are showing out to 2040 and 2050, and I'll be happy to see those changes as they develop, and hopefully I'm here for the 2050th one.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillor, Garen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I too am skeptical of climate change. I have been. Great presentation. I mean, it scared the jesus out of me, to be honest with you, when I was reading it over the weekend. I don't know if, I think I need more research and more education, awareness. A lot of people are skeptical of climate change as well. Can we, on a municipal level, by just doing our part, make a big impact on the world? I don't know. So again, I do like the idea of doing what we can on a local level. I don't know about doing much more than that to try to help the whole world.
Thank you, councillor. Anybody else? Go ahead, councillor.
I think this is a pointed procedure, but this position disappears on February 2021 because council voted that it was temporary. So does passing this now make this temporary position like the super department everyone else has to report to? Don't we have to make that position permanent before we hand all this power over to this new committee? I don't understand how this works.
Can you answer that, Chris?
Through worship, no. I mean, the position is set as a contract position. The plan, although Niharaka is going to be initiating and spearheading, it doesn't have to be around for the implementation and the things that the Town of Essex is going to agree to do to implement that plan. So no, it doesn't mean that we're creating a super department in terms of climate change and climate change officials, and the contract position is as it was approved in the budget.
Thank you. Anybody else?
If I can say, councillor Van Endel and myself, we have many discussions about this, and some things I agree with and some things I don't agree with, and I have to support this. I'm involved with a lot of outdoor activity, hunting and fishing, and I can see just the Great Lakes, what's happening with the ice forming. There isn't any anymore. There hasn't been for years, and I strongly believe it is from global warming, and same with the weather patterns today. Look at today. You know, here, we had an extreme cold last week. This week here, we're above freezing. So it's got a lot to do with climate, and I believe, I strongly believe us, as residents, we're destroying our climate. I truly believe that. So councillor Van Endel, I said I have to disagree with you, but we can have this argument many, many times, you and I. Thank you.
Need a motion to receive, receive it and move it, and to direct administration to put a climate change action plan in accordance with the municipalities for this program to go forward. So I need a mover. Councillor Verbeek, you're moving both of them?
Sure.
Okay. I need a seconder for that. Seconder? Councillor Bjorkman?
May I have a recorded vote, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, you may. Any questions before I ask? Okay. Deputy Mayor Malasch, how do you vote on this? Oh, sorry.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So on the...
I have your recorded vote.
We have a request for a recorded vote, as requested by councillor Bondi.
Yep.
The motion is to receive the presentation on climate impacts and adaptation strategies, and that council direct administration to implement the climate change action plan in accordance with the Municipalities for Climate Innovation Program of the Federation of Canadian Municipalities as set out in that presentation. On that motion, councillor Bondi, how do you vote?
Support.
Support. Councillor Van Endel?
Oppose.
Councillor Bowman?
Support.
Mayor Snively?
Support.
Deputy Mayor Malasch?
Support.
Councillor Garen?
Oppose.
Councillor Verbeek?
Support.
And councillor Bjorkman?
Support.
So on the motion, I have recorded councillor Bondi as support, councillor Van Endel opposed, councillor Bowman support, Mayor Snively support, deputy mayor support, councillor Garen opposed, councillor Verbeek support, and councillor Bjorkman support. So with a vote of six in favor, two opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Item nine, any reports from our youth council members?
Councillors, have you had anything tonight?
I'd like to congratulate all the people who made honor roll at my school. There's a banquet we're having tomorrow. I'd like just to congratulate everyone who kind of made it.
Item ten, any update from county council this evening? Deputy Mayor Malash?
Just maybe of interest to some of our council members here is that if you have an opportunity on Wednesday, there's three presentations on climate change emergency declaration. So if anybody's interested in--
Save them a seat.
Yeah. In hearing what they have to say at the county level and what they're going to be throwing at county council as challenges in this regard, you may want to attend. Or I can, we don't have the reports ahead of time as to what they're going to present. But what I could do, the mayor or myself can forward you the reports that we're going to receive because they'll probably send us something electronically at the last minute. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Anybody?
Eleven point one on the agenda, correspondence to be received. That the correspondence so listed in eleven point one be received and where indicated to further share with the community.
Doing them all. Yeah, we can do them all. So I need a mover. A seconder, please. Councillor Bowman, any questions on any of these? All in favor? First question, councillor Bondi.
I just wanted to point out that there is a climate change declaration on there. So maybe a couple of our councillors want to abstain or deny voting for it. I know we're just receiving it, but--
Yeah, we're just receiving the report.
Eleven point two, correspondence from the township of Romero. That said correspondence from the township of Romero dated November 7th advising that a resolution have been passed expressing the desire for the provision of an exit clause in any new Conservation Authorities Act be received or received and supported, and if so supported, that the appropriate letter of support be sent to the Minister of Environment, Conservation and Parks, our Member of Provincial Parliament, and the Township of Romero.
Mover, please. Councillor Verbeek?
I would need that we just receive this report?
Just receive it? Okay, second. Pardon?
I'd support it.
Okay, seconder?
No, I'd support your motion.
Oh, you support the motion. Okay. Okay. Seconder, councillor Bjorkman?
I'll second it with a friendly amendment if I can. I'd like to second it and send a letter of non-support to the people that this is asking us to send a letter of support to.
Okay.
I accept the amendment.
Okay, great.
Councillor Van Endel?
Sure.
I've heard from almost every other member of council that we have problems with the Conservation Authority and its expanding jurisdiction and its interference with some of our plans. That's what this is about, at least partially. We're in the same situation as a lot of other communities in Ontario where our development and our plans are being held up by the Conservation Authority. And this is what this is about. And as a member of IRCA, I could tell you that IRCA is basically engaged in a kind of a war with the current provincial government over its jurisdiction, which has expanded greatly over the past 20 years. So maybe we should discuss this. I mean, if the rest of council doesn't want, just wants to let them do what they do, fine. But there are a lot of ramifications for the Town of Essex going forward, and this might be a way for us to address them. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Verbeek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's some of the things that councillor Van Der Dolan said are the reasons why I was quick to make a motion to only receive this and to certainly not send a letter of support, and then to agree with the amendment to send a letter of non-support, simply because I think it would be reckless of us to just jump on board with this municipality and, you know, their correspondence without us doing due diligence, without us doing our own homework to just make an uneducated decision to support this letter and move forward tonight without, you know, at least having some more knowledgeable people advise us on this. So that's why I would support just receiving with the amendment to send a letter of non-support.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Van Endel, do you agree with that? I think that gives us some leverage.
Well, yes and no. I like the idea of us doing homework and discussing what do we want from IRCA. I agree with councillor Verbeek on that. We need to discuss, what do we want from them? What problems are we currently experiencing? What changes do we want? But it seems as though receiving this or receiving it and sending them a letter telling them to buzz off is not the right idea. Maybe we should have a discussion about this at a future meeting before doing anything.
Councillor Van Endel, I'm going to go to the mover and the seconder and ask if they would remove the motion, if they're willing to do that, and we can table this if you want to--
On a border, we all want to have something to say about this.
Okay.
We'll say something.
Okay. Go ahead, councillor.
Thank you very much. What I see this as, the benefits that we get of being part of this Conservation Authority, the work that they do on our behalf and on this county's behalf, for our own, for IRCA, is incredible. The value that we have from these people. They work in concert with the other conservation areas, all the way up the coast for Lake Erie and then up into Toronto and north of that. We are financed by the provincial government to an extent, and as we have people pull out and drop off and say, no, we don't want that, no, we don't want this, that funding's going to disappear. I mean, they're all, and I agree, there's already a match going on between Conservation Authorities and the government. But for us to start to allow different conservation groups to pull out of here, pull out of this, pretty soon that funding is going to go away. And they're talking about here, that can be provided by alternative governance programs and/or services that are less costly and unwanted Conservation Authority jurisdictions. They're saying, we can pay for our own. We don't want all this stuff they're doing. We'll pay our own way. We don't want to pay our share of, in Essex County, there's seven of us, plus the city, all paying a share. You're going to have one of these communities say, you know what? I don't really want to do that. I'm not going to pay my share. That is not going to help us at all. So I'm 100% against this, the way it sits. I'd be happy to send them a note that says, I'm unhappy with it the way it sits. And if there's something else to be done and something to talk about, I'd like to look at that then. Thank you.
Any other--
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also agree with the motion by councillor Verbeek and councillor Bjorkman.
I'm also really confused by our IRCA board rep and his position against IRCA because when I take a position contrary to a board I'm on, I get served a registered letter. But hey, that's me, when I do something. So if we have a problem with IRCA, we can invite them here and talk about our agreement and say, okay, let's look at this. Maybe we need more focus on this area or a focus on that area. I've not heard the same consensus from our council members that we have a lot of problems with IRCA. I think IRCA is doing generally a really good job in a really hard area to do. It's a really hard job telling people where and when they can build homes, especially when people in our area live in cottage country and want to do additions in floodplains. And so we need somebody with that heavy hand. I do not believe municipalities have the capacity to take on the role that IRCA does. You know, before, we tried to do a restaurant. We couldn't take on a restaurant. So I just want to leave our table to municipal business. So, and we've also sent out letters before to other municipalities, and we've got back letters saying pretty much buzz off. So it's not, I don't feel like we're going to offend this municipality. It seems to me, from the research I've done, that we have a disgruntled municipality out there with their Conservation Authority, and they're looking to leverage municipalities. And I don't, I don't think we have anything major wrong in our area. If we have issues that are wrong, we invite IRCA here and we work them out. So I will be supporting the motion. And Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to ask for a recorded vote.
Thank you, councillor. Anybody else? Councillor Bowman?
I just want to point out that some of the issues that IRCA deals with, most of them are, that don't fit their core values that IRCA was originally started out as, come under items that were, I guess, asked of them by municipalities or the county. The John R. Park Homes, that is one classic example. It was a sort of a community thing it started out, and it was all agreed that it should be a county historical place. And the county has absolutely no operations under those type of things. So the logical one was the IRCA board that's taken it over. The issues with the septic systems, how those started, that was again funneled towards IRCA because the basic communities at the time had no expertise on that type of issues going out. And it became the logical thing to move towards. It certainly doesn't fit their mandate, but it became part of their existence. And I guess now the province is saying that they want to go back to the core values, but they're not addressing those issues as well that IRCA is providing. And who's going to provide that service moving forward? Because in most cases, the local municipalities don't have that expertise on board. You're going to have to have another layer of somebody coming in to do that. So those are all types of issues that I think are going to have to work through in the future. Again, it's a provincial direction, so how that pans out is probably out of our control and probably out of the county's control as well. But it'll probably evolve, and hopefully better heads come together and come up with a common goal that's good for everybody. But until that type of stuff filters out, I think there's going to be a big learning curve on everybody's part there. I don't support, or I support the motion as presented because I think this looks like a municipality with some sour grapes for some reason or other. And in some cases, maybe you could get away with paying less if you didn't opt into the thing. But if you're opted to be able to pick and choose what you want, you're going to have troubles there too. So I'm supporting the motion.
Thank you, councillor. Anybody else? So Deputy Mayor Malash?
Thank you through your worship. I too am going to support the motion. And similar to what other councillors are saying at the table here, IRCA plays a role that I think is very important and crucial in our communities as far as making sure the rules of conservation are held in high regard. And a lot of times, I'll get complaints from residents who are not happy with what IRCA is telling them as a result of their requests, or the time that it takes them to research the requests that they have in front of IRCA. But the thing is, is that it's a bylaw enforcement, and they're taking a look at things that are important to our community, and they're making sure that things are done properly so that there's no further erosions, there's no further pollutions of creeks, or that things are done in a controlled fashion that are not going to have an effect on our environment or what's in the better, for the betterment of our region in that sense. So I'm in favor of this. If we want to discuss at a later point in time, we can discuss because maybe we do want a different reach or a different set of controls for IRCA. But right now, I would say that this letter itself is a good thing to say that we're not supporting the changes that they're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. One last time. Okay, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I hope nobody misconstrued what I said. I'm not in any way opposed to what IRCA does. That's why I volunteered. I asked to be on the board. But the fact is that, as tonight's conversation showed, we're going through this climate discussion. We've got real stuff going on in our community with water destruction. IRCA, for instance, was created to help protect us from water destruction. We have 600 families on the lake who want to do something, and IRCA is preventing them from building, break walls, preventing them from putting in concrete, and wants to debate the climate. Now, it seems to me that, yes, they're a great organization who do things to help us, but what are the main things we want them to do? They're not doing right now while they're off on this wild goose chase, which is very expensive and time-consuming, which I don't think most people support. So I think this would have been a great opportunity to discuss this. But, you know, if I'm overruled, so be it. Thank you.
Any else? Okay, councillor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Because in most cases, the local municipalities don't have that expertise on board. You're going to have to have another layer of somebody coming in to do that. So those are all types of issues that I think are going to have to work through in the future. Again, it's a provincial direction, so how that pans out is probably out of our control and probably out of the county's control as well. But it'll probably evolve and hopefully better heads come together and come up with a, with a common goal that's good for everybody. But until that type of stuff filters out, I think there's going to be a big learning curve on everybody's part there. I don't support, or I support the motion as presented because I think this looks like a municipality with some sour grapes for some reason or other. And in some cases, maybe you could get away with paying less if you didn't opt into the thing, but if you're opted to be able to pick and choose what you want, you're going to have troubles there too. So I'm supporting the motion.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else? So Deputy Mayor Millash.
Thank you, through your worship. I too am going to support the motion. And similar to what other councillors are saying at the table here, ERCA plays a rule that I think is very important and crucial in our communities as far as making sure the rules of conservation are held in high regard. And a lot of times, I'll get, I'll get complaints from residents who are not happy with what ERCA's, what ERCA is telling them as a result of their requests or the time that it takes them to research the requests that they have in front of ERCA. But the thing is, is that it's a bylaw enforcement, and it's, they're taking a look at things that are important to our community, and they're making sure that things are done properly so that there's no further erosions, there's no further pollutions of creeks, or that things are done in a controlled fashion that are not going to have an effect on our environment or what's in the better, for the betterment of our region in that sense. So I'm in favor of this. If we want to discuss at a later point in time, we can discuss because maybe, maybe we do want a different reach or a different set of controls for ERCA. But right now, I would say that this letter itself is a good thing to say that we're not supporting the changes that they, that they're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. One more time. Okay, go ahead.
Through Mr. Chair, I hope nobody misconstrued what I said. I'm not in any way opposed to what ERCA does. That's why I volunteered, I asked to be on the board. But the fact is that, as tonight's conversation showed, we're going through this, this climate discussion. We've got real stuff going on in our community with water destruction. ERCA, for instance, was created to help protect us from water destruction. We have 600 families on the lake who want to do something, and ERCA is preventing them from building break walls, preventing them from putting in concrete, and wants to debate the climate. Now, it seems to me that, yes, they're a great organization who do things to help us, but what are the main things we want them to do? They're not doing right now while they're off on this wild goose chase, which is very expensive and time consuming, which I don't think most people support. So I think this would have been a great opportunity to discuss this, but if, you know, if I'm overruled, so be it. Thank you.
Any else? Okay, Counselor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think if our ERCA reps are hearing information and they think that we need to have a meeting with ERCA and realign our services and that, I would like, if there's concerns with Conservation Authorities, I would leave that in the hands to our ERCA reps to bring that to council and to say, council, let's talk about this. For example, if it's Dog Pound related, I come knocking on council's door. Council, we need to deal with this. I don't know this other municipality, I don't know their issues, but if we have Essex-specific issues, I'm more than happy to meet with our council and our Conservation Authority.
Motion on the floor, I'm going to have Rob read the motion again. We had a seconder, so he'll read it again, and Counselor Bondi asks for a recorded vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion on the floor is that the correspondence from the Township of Romero dated November 7th, 2019 advising that a resolution had been passed to express the desire for the provision of an exit clause in any new Conservation Authorities Act be received, but with a letter of non-support to be sent to the Township of Romero, the minister, and, and the Member of Provincial Parliament. So, as moved, as moved by Counselor Verbeek, as seconded by Counselor Bjorkman, and the request for a, the request for a recorded vote from Counselor Bondi. Counselor Bondi, how do you vote on the motion? Counselor Van der Dolen? Counselor Bowman? Mayor Snively? Support. Deputy Mayor Millash? Counselor Garen? Counselor Verbeek? And Counselor Bjorkman? So on the question, Counselor Bondi voted support, Counselor Van der Dolen opposed, Counselor Bondi support, Mayor Snively support, Deputy Mayor Millash support, Counselor Garen support, Counselor Verbeek support, and Counselor Bjorkman support. So with a recorded vote of seven in support and one opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you, Rob.
Item 12 on this evening's agenda, committee meeting minutes. That the minutes listed in item 12 be received, approved, and adopted as circulated.
Mover please. Counselor Bjorkman and Deputy Mayor Millash, all in favor? Kerry, thank you.
Under item 15, notices motion, notices of motion as added to the adopted agenda this evening is a notice of motion for presentment only. Counselor Bondi, could you please state your notice of motion, which will be brought back for consideration at the December 2nd regular council meeting?
Sure, Mr. Clerk, and through you to the, to the mayor, that the council of the Town of Essex change its procedure bylaw to prohibit council and committee meetings on November 11th to observe remembrance day and to honor our veterans.
Thank you, Counselor.
Item 16 on the agenda, any reports and announcements from council members.
Deputy Mayor Millash?
Coming up on November the 30th, the annual Gesto Christmas Hay Ride is going to be leaving from Colchester North Public School at 11:00 sharp. Any kids or families that would like to jump on a wagon, sing Christmas carols, and follow our, one of our Station 2 fire trucks along with Santa, come on out. There'll be some entertainment in the gymnasium afterwards. Pizza and healthy drinks will be served and a present for every child that attends. Thank you. November 30th, 11 o'clock sharp, that's Saturday.
Thank you. Counselor Verbeek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have several actually, so I'll be really quick. I just wanted to put a shout out to the St. Clement Church Choir, who the last two weekends have had a concert that they put on called From the Heart. They've also made a CD, and they are incredible, and I would suggest they are doing it again next year. It's, it's something you really want to see. They do an awesome job. Also, coming up in the community, there's turkey and basket bingos in McGregor at the Columbian Club. They're put on by service groups in our community that do a lot of good things to help the community with the money that they raise at these bingos. The Squires, the St. Clement CWL, and the McGregor KFC put on the three different bingos, November 24th, December 1st, December 8th. They're basket bingos, they have lots of raffles and draws, and like I say, the funds used, they put back into the community. Also, just, I know you mentioned the Goodfellows, but I, this was the first year I was actually able to participate. I helped with the counting team at the, at the church, and I also got to stand out with the firemen in the cold and sell papers. And what a dedicated group of people that are working really hard and giving generously to raise funds that will go back to help the less fortunate at Christmas time with these baskets. Thanks.
Counselor Bjorkman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to say thank you to the group that put on the Windsor Community Policing fundraiser on Saturday night. It was a great turnout. The committee that does that does a tremendous job, and the funds go to the VIP program, the programs that our police do in the community with our, with our kids. It was a great turnout. Coming up on Friday night is the tree lighting at the town hall at 6 o'clock. So they'll have a couple of bands there, they've got the hot dogs and chili and hot chocolate, so bring the, bring the family out, and the official tree lighting will be Friday night. And then Saturday and Sunday, out at Colchester Marina up in our, in the community room, is Explore the Shores Christmas Sale. So there'll be a lot of local vendors and people there selling their wares for Christmas. Go on out and support them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Bondi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today I got invited to participate in a vibrant communities initiative at St. Clair Centre for the Arts, and it was really good. It was almost like a regional strategic planning session with elected officials and CEOs and people from all different, you know, banks and everywhere. So it was really good, and I was lucky to bring our, I know it was the draft one, but I brought our Essex strategic plan forward. We talked about our strengths, and then we talked about where we wanted to be in five years. And so I made sure to say, you know, we want, we don't want to have flooding anymore, we want to have fiber optics or better internet in our rural areas. And so it was really good, and they're putting together, you know, some ideas and all, you know, I think our council, I think you got invited, Mr. Mayor, but you had a conflict. So if we get called again, it was a really good networking and strategic planning session. So I just want to thank council for that. And one more thing, for this letter that we just passed for the non-support, I would like to see if we could have it when it's ready, if council can get it. And I also just want to put it out there, I'd really like these letters to be listed on our website. I'm going to keep asking until, until it comes.
Thank you, Counselor Vanden.
Well, continuing on the Christmas theme, Saturday night was the annual Santa run for ERCA. And so was ERCA rep, my wife, Veronique, and I went on the Santa run along with a half dozen other residents of Essex. What a terrific event it was. I wasn't wild about the idea at first, but there's something about the sight of 1,500 Santas jogging and wobbling along the road. So it was, it was a great time, and I just wondered if ERCA wants to, intends to continually hold it in Amersberg because it would be great to have that event in Essex at some future point. And I really advise people to check out the event next year. It's a fun thing to do.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Bowman?
Not too much this week, just one item. Congratulations to Mr. Joel Garen on his birthday yesterday. I believe he's 52. So again, congrats.
That's it? I, I have nothing myself. I said the two things at the beginning of the meeting, that's what I was going to say. So, thank you.
Item 17-1, bylaws for third reading this evening. 1865 being a bylaw to enter into a caretaker agreement for the AME Cemetery.
Mover please. For, on Counselor Vanden and Counselor Bowman, any questions? All in favor?
1866 to confirm the proceedings from the November 4th regular council meeting.
Mover please. Counselor Vanden and Counselor Bjorkman, all in favor? Kerry.
And 1849 to provide for the self-mold and drain replacement bridge for David and Jamie Kendrick.
Mover please. Deputy Mayor Millash and Counselor Bjorkman, all in favor? Kerry.
And under item 17.3 for two readings this evening, 1869 to confirm the proceedings of this November 18th regular council meeting.
Mover please. Counselor Verbeek and Counselor Garen, all in favor? And I need a motion to adjourn. Deputy Mayor Millash and Counselor Garen, all in favor? Kerry. Thank you. And thanks for the audience coming out tonight. We appreciate it.